It is the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. We're here every single day from five to six talking about the local issues that matter to you most and taking your phone calls at 800-222-KABC, 1-800-222-5222. Read your emails as well at randykabc@gmail.com. That's randykabc@gmail.com. And on Apple Podcasts, give us a follow by searching for the KABC News Blitz. Today, the LA City Council voted unanimously to pass an ordinance that would define Los Angeles in the city code as a sanctuary city. What does that mean? I'm going to let you know. How do you feel about it? That's what you're going to let me know by giving me a call at 800-222-KABC, 1-800-222-5222. How do you feel about the Los Angeles City Council voting unanimously to declare themselves a sanctuary city? So first off, you might be confused. Hasn't LA always been a sanctuary city? Yes, but no, but yes, it's very confusing. And most of this is posturing, most of this is grandstanding, and most of this is very, very, very performative. But since the LA City Council wants to get on the national stage to talk about this, let's get into what exactly this is all going to mean for the city of Los Angeles. Here's a report on what happened today at the LA City Council from KTLA.
The LA City Council has passed an ordinance formally declaring Los Angeles a sanctuary city.
Now, this move sets the stage for a possible immigration standoff with the incoming Trump administration. KTLA Five's Lauren Lister, live in downtown Los Angeles with that story. Lauren? Wouldn't the whole state be in a showdown because we're a sanctuary state thanks to Kevin DeLeone?
Yeah, Glenn and Lou, a short time ago, the City Council voted unanimously to pass that sanctuary city ordinance here at City Hall. We're told there are a few more steps. It had some amendments, so it does need to go back to the council for one more vote, but that's been called performative by some, and then it goes to the mayor's desk to be signed.
This whole thing is performative. This doesn't actually prevent people from getting deported.
What do we want? When do we want it?
They were really in unison for that one.
People turning up in large numbers at City Hall today to urge the council to pass the sanctuary city ordinance, a rally outside and a packed meeting inside with many coming to speak out.
I'm a second generation Mexican-American. My grandmother comes from Durango.
Like Shauna Casa, most of those taking the podium during hours of public comment voicing their support.
The deportation agenda that Trump's administration has been talking about is extremely violent. This ordinance is really about protecting my community.
Yeah, but what does the ordinance actually do? Because what the City Council voted on is that the city won't use their resources to assist ICE. But federal immigration agents can still come into Los Angeles and they can enforce any federal law they want, including the immigration laws. And the City Council nor the state can't really do anything about that.
Some coming to raise concerns, worried the ordinance might encourage illegal immigration.
I'm sure there's millions of people around the world that would love to come to LA, right? But we can't handle it. There has to be some kind of limit established.
The ordinance of-
And a lot of this has to do with what goes on in the jails. That was the precipice for Special Order 40 and the sanctuary city status that's up in San Francisco. And sometimes these get taken to such an insane degree that you end up losing a lot of the people that you say that you're advocating for. For instance, in San Francisco, one of their supervisors wanted to pass an ordinance to modify the city's sanctuary city rule, saying that if we arrest a fentanyl dealer who happens to be in the country illegally, and the vast majority of fentanyl dealers in the tenderloin happen to be in the country illegally from Honduras, I don't know why that's the thing, but that's the thing, they said, well, those ones, the ones that are dealing fentanyl that's killing people on the streets, we should be able to turn them over to immigration. And that supervisor got shouted down and called a racist, and that did not pass. And I think it's events like that which might lead you to wonder exactly how we got to the election result that we got to in November.
The ordinance officially prohibits any city resources or-
Because you have to be able to at least have a common sense conversation on this subject.
The ordinance officially prohibits any city resources or personnel from being used to help federal enforcement of immigration laws.
It does not stop deportations from happening.
A number of City Council-
So any one of the City Council that's trying to get on the national stage saying, we're out to protect you, not really.
A number of-
It's all an act.
A number of City Council members talking about why.
We don't have a safer city if people are living in fear and hiding in the shadows and unable to come forward and cooperate with law enforcement in manners that we need them to.
Now, I want you to remember, that's LA City Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez. That was something that was reiterated over and over and over again at the City Council meeting as to why we needed to enshrine sanctuary status into the city's rules. It's because if we don't have these kind of sanctuary protections, then the community of people that are in this country illegally that live in Los Angeles will not report crime. They'll be afraid to talk to this police, they'll be afraid to talk to any city services. They will be in the shadows, and we've got to bring them out of the shadows. Just remember that Monica Rodriguez said that.
Local officials say it would formally codify an approach the city has already taken.
Most of what's in this ordinance has already been LA city policy, not just since Garcetti, but really for many decades.
Yeah, this all goes back to Special Order 40 from the LAPD from the seventies. And the thing that I find very interesting, especially as this discussion started a week ago, most people assumed we already were a sanctuary city because we de facto were. And that's how the city has been operating for 45 years. But despite having Special Order 40, which prevents LAPD from turning detainees over to ICE and assisting with any federal immigration, and you can make arguments for and against that, but we've had that, yet still, the City Council, and I'll play you example after example after example, claims that, well, the problem is that people in the country illegally won't talk to the police. But we've had Special Order 40 for 40 years and they're still not?
The vote coming two weeks after President-elect Donald Trump's win in the race for the White House, following his campaign where he stressed border security.
Guys, you're doubling up on the audio, you're killing me.
Legally, while many details on his pledge mass deportation are unclear, and Trump has indicated at times a focus on criminals, his incoming borders are saying this on 60 Minutes.
Is there a way to carry out mass deportation without separating families?
Of course there is. Families can be deported together.
An immigration attorney says a sanctuary city ordinance for LA would have this effect.
The federal government can still come in and attempt to enforce its deportation proceedings or deportation orders, but it's going to be much more difficult if they don't have city compliance or city monies enforcing those orders.
I'm pretty sure if the feds want to do this, they're going to do this, whether the city of Los Angeles is a sanctuary city or not. Yeah, city employees won't be involved and LAPD won't be involved, but I think the point that they're trying to make, especially with the results of that election, is the feds are going to do this. The feds have ignored this for a very long time, and this is what's going to happen. Whether you agree with it or not, this sanctuary city status is going to do nothing.
In reaction to KTLA, the LA County GOP party spokesperson saying in part, so-called sanctuary cities and states sound warm and fuzzy, but the protections they offer aren't for abuelas, which means grandmothers, getting ice cream, they're for people who've entered the country illegally and committed additional crimes, whether drunk driving, robbery, sexual violence, assault or murder, none of those should go unpunished. Perpetrators should definitely not be protected by the largess taken from hardworking taxpayers.
And that's part of the disconnect here. Well, yeah, you can definitely say that you don't want some of the hardworking people, you know, whether they're the farm workers, people working at barns, taking care of horses, whatever it is, you know, house cleaners, you don't necessarily want those people kicked out of the country, and there should be some kind of resolution for that, but I don't think we're seeing that on the federal level anytime soon. At the very least, can we at least agree that the people who have come here illegally and on top of that are committing crimes, that maybe we've got to do something about them? How about the criminal tourism gangs, the, you know, that come up here from Chile specifically to rob people's houses in Los Angeles and Orange County? Shouldn't we, like, immediately want to work with the federal government to deport those people? That's where a blanket policy like, we're not going to turn over anybody, I think loses a lot of people.
Now, according to experts, this does set up a battle between LA and the incoming Trump administration. We did reach out to Trump represent-
At least you didn't say showdown. I'm so sick of already hearing that.
We did reach out to Trump representatives for comment. We'll let you know what we hear back. For now, live in downtown LA, I'm Lauren Lister. I'll send it back to you.
All right, thank you, Lauren. The city of Los Angeles voted unanimously to become a sanctuary city. How do you feel about this? 800-222-KABC, 1-800-222-5222. And again, part of the reason that Nithya and Monica and the rest of them at the LA City Council said we need this is because we need immigrants to feel safe, that their government will not think on them to immigration, that the local city government, whether it be police, whether it be fire or city services, is here for you, and we want people to feel safe in reporting crime.
We began this process over-
This is Nithya.
We began this process over a year ago, knowing that we can't predict the future and that Angelenos deserve to be protected, no matter who is in power at the local level and at the federal government. While this body had previously passed a resolution declaring Los Angeles a city of sanctuary in 2017-
So we've already done this. Again, this is so performative.
Those policies-
I feel bad for anybody that maybe has a family member that, you know, has questionable legal status that thinks that, oh, the city of LA has my backyard. No, they don't. This is all about grandstanding.
Those policies were not codified into municipal law. Our current relationship with federal immigration agencies is shaped by internal LAPD policies, some of which have been there for decades, and an executive directive issued by former Mayor Eric Garcetti.
You know, the guy who does the DiWali dance on Twitter.
And these policies have been good and important to ensure that Angelenos feel safe here calling on the city for support and calling on city resources to meet their needs. But it does mean that at the flip of a switch or the change of an administration, these policies can be rescinded. Evidence has shown, studies have shown over and over again, that when there are heightened fears around immigration enforcement, immigrant communities are more reluctant to call on the city for help, to ask our city for resources, even in cases of domestic violence and other emergencies, even in cases of urgent need, we must be a city that ensures that Angelenos are able to lean on it for help.
But we already have that, right? Are you saying that we have had the executive order from Garcetti going back seven years, and we've had Special Order 40 with the LAPD going back 45 years, but that immigrant community is still reluctant to talk to police? That doesn't, then it's not working. Then what exactly is your argument here? I'm very confused. Monica Rodriguez, help me out.
And we know that so often, members of our community, of our immigrant community are, even without this administration, have lived in fear and have consequently been among those with the highest rates of underreporting of crime or assaults or violence against them out of fear for these very circumstances.
Yeah, but if we already had sanctuary status through Special Order 40 and Eric Garcetti's executive order, and that didn't stop them from not reporting crime, what makes you think this is? Maybe that part of this argument doesn't make any sense.
It's why the Los Angeles Police Department has honored, going back to the 1970s, Special Order 40, that prohibits the cooperative relationship with federal immigration agencies. This was, again, reinforced in 2017, as Ms. Rahmman indicated, by Mayor Garcetti.
Are you confused yet? Because simultaneously, they're telling you that the sanctuary city policies work and that they don't work. So I'm very confused.
With Executive Order 20. And so we're talking about, really, it's not, we're not talking about very substantive changes, but we are still talking about the same underlying fear that is affecting so many of our communities.
We're not really doing anything differently, we're just saying it louder. And the thing that we say that we're doing it, we say we need it because the community is afraid to talk to law enforcement. And after 45 years, they're still afraid to talk to law enforcement. Does it seem like there's a disconnect here? There's a lot of grandstanding going on at LA City Hall today, but hey, they did it. They voted unanimously. The LA City Council voted to enshrine sanctuary city status, sanctuary city status in Los Angeles. How do you feel about that? 800-222-KABC, 1-800-222-5222. Let's go to Edmund in Camarillo. Edmund, hello.
Hello, they're shooting themselves in the foot, exactly what you said. The order has been around for a long time. I worked at Burbank PD in the eighties and nineties. We worked in partnership with ICE while LAPD did not. And what you do is you incentivize criminals to commit crimes in the city of Los Angeles. It's so simple. They're shooting themselves in the foot. They're not going to cross the line from North Hollywood to Burbank.
And that's why we see a very different city just crossing over Hollywood Way on Magnolia from Burbank to North Hollywood.
Exactly.
I think you make a great point, Edmund. Appreciate it. That's the thing, like, I think everyone can agree that, or everyone should be able to agree that, you know, if you have people that have done very, very, very bad things on top of the fact that they're not really supposed to be here, we should do something about that. I would love to also have the conversation about what we do with the people who haven't done anything wrong, except they've been in this country illegally, but I don't see that happening anytime soon. But if we can't at least agree on the people that have committed criminal acts, that is where I think you're losing people and why you saw such a strong swing in the other direction, even especially among Latinos, going towards the Republican Party in this election. Let's go to Joe in Woodland Hills. Joe, hello.
Hello. The speakers you've had on with their quotes, they talk about fear, they talk about safety. What about the rest of us that are afraid of our safety, that we're fearful to go out, all the crime on the streets, the tent cities, et cetera? This whole sanctuary city thing does nothing but incentivize criminals and makes the city less safe for all of us. And it's ridiculous, and I'm not one of those that makes the threat. Esprow on my house in Kentucky closes January 15th, and I'm out of here because this city-
Oh, my.
-is a lost cause.
You're leaving.
I'm leaving. I'm 70 years old, I've been here my whole life, it's over. You know, my wife and I sat down and said, what do you think this place is going to look like in 10 years? And we can't fathom what it's going to look like in 10 more years.
Well, I hope you enjoy greener pastures out there in Kentucky. Joe, just remember, the talk radio's not nearly as good out there, so download that KABC app and we'll keep you entertained. And you have this extra little joy because you'll be able to laugh at California from the safety of your old Kentucky home. Thanks so much for the call, Joe, appreciate it. He can go on the Bourbon Trail whenever he wants. I'm a little jealous. Let's go to Paul in Van Nuys. Paul, hello.
Hey, Randy, listen, you know, Eisenhower, 1953, deported almost 2 million illegal aliens out of here. So, you know, yeah, I mean, the City Council, we know what they are. They have no respect whatsoever for our country, for the citizenry. You know, I mean, it's interesting, you go to a military graveyard, cemetery, and you'll see, there's all kinds of crosses there, mostly, mostly white men that died for the liberty for the citizenry here that never got a chance to see what America was. I mean, they're so disgusting. They hate America to the core. You know, it doesn't matter what it is, you know, and these are not, these are not immigrants. They're not immigrants. There's a difference between immigrants, has to be, it has to be legal, but it's a monumental job, it's a disgusting place to live now. If I had my choice, I'd be in Nevada. I don't, I have somebody that's depending on me because I like sports gambling. But I mean, just beside this, what, it's just, I hope that some, at least clear out the criminals out of here, that's all I can say.
I think most people would agree with that sentiment. And just remember, state line isn't far, you can still leave your sports gambling and be at home in time for dinner. Paul, thanks so much for the call, appreciate it. 800-222-KABC is the phone number, 1-800-222-5222. The Los Angeles City Council voted today to enshrine sanctuary city status in the city of Los Angeles. How do you feel about that? 800-222-KABC. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC. We're taking your phone calls at 800-222-KABC. The LA City Council voted unanimously to enshrine sanctuary city status within the city of Los Angeles. We're taking your reaction to that. Let's go to Danny in North Hollywood. Danny, hello.
Hey, how you doing? Um, well, it's like I was telling your gal there, you know, I think that this is just more evidence, not like we need any, that the Democrats just don't get it, they didn't get, they don't get, heck, this election was not just about Trump, but it's also a rightward tilt throughout the whole state. They have to play identity politics because it's the only, you know, they say if the only tool you have is a hammer, every problem looks like a nail. So they're going to be playing identity politics. And I just want to add that they're trying to group people together that don't want to be grouped together anymore by race, by color, whatever you want to call it. There's no such thing as a Latino voter, like they all vote the same. There's no such thing as a black voter, like they all vote the same. And they're still playing this, and, you know, a lot of them are probably too young, unlike myself, to remember that we've had Republican governors in this state, and we could very well have another one if they don't get with the program. And all they really have to do is come back to the center. They don't have to go to the right, but if they keep staying all the way over on the left with this immigration issue, which is the biggest issue that probably of all of them, they're just going to, they're not going to get anywhere with this. I just don't think they will.
Well, I think that's evidenced by the last election. They lost a lot of voters, specifically in California, by taking these stances. You make a really good point, and we should all try to strive for the center for common sense. Danny, thank you so much for the call, appreciate it. More of your calls coming up, and we'll hear what Hugo has to say, what Kevin DeLeone has to say, and what who now I think is the smartest member of the LA City Council, Amelda Padilla has to say.
The neighborhood kids, the down ass kids, don't like it.
It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. It is the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. We're here every single day from five to six talking about the local issues that matter to you most and taking your phone calls at 800-222-KABC, 1-800-222-5222. Your emails as well at randykabc@gmail.com. And give us a follow on Apple Podcasts, search the KABC News Blitz. The LA City Council voted unanimously today to enshrine sanctuary city status in the city of Los Angeles, and we're taking your calls on that. Let's go to Rick in Canoga Park. Rick, hello.
Yeah, hi. Hi, Randy. You know, has anyone considered that the immigrants don't want to report crime because they know the criminals will not be prosecuted, that they'll, it's a sanctuary, and they'll be back in the same neighborhood terrorizing them again?
Oh, and they know that if you get on the wrong side of that criminal, they know that you reported the crime. Now you might get retaliated against because, yes, due to our soft on crime policies, a whole bunch of people did not get sent to prison.
Yeah, the, the policy needs to be modified. Criminals need to be deported.
I think that that is the common sense piece that is missing from most of the LA City Council that is why they've lost so many people in this last election. Let's go to Ed in Santa Clarita. Ed, hello.
Hello, Randy. I just like to say that removing the immigration out of the question from the cities, the cities' responsibility is to make sure that the local taxes get spent on local issues and not a federal issues. Therefore, making a sanctuary city is the right thing to do. I mean, we should not put, supposed to use our money, local money, our local taxes and enforcing federal law. That's something, that's for the federal government to do. And so therefore, the foreign people is not for cities to do. All the cities should be able to draw similar mandates and decide to say, no, we're not going to spend our local taxpayers' money on something that is your problem. So I commend and therefore being responsible with the local voters to say, no, we're not going to spend money that way. Immigration is a federal issue, not a local issue, local enforcement issue. Our officers have enough crime on their hands to deal with it. And being an illegal immigrant, although my people say it's a crime, but it's not a crime in a sense that they're here to kill anybody. Okay, they're here to work. And if the federal government doesn't want to give them a chance to do it, well, they got to do what they got to do, but leave the cities out of it. And all the cities should, should enforce and adopt the same policy. I don't see what the problem is.
Well, I understand what you're saying, and when you're talking about, you know, specifically, this is a federal law, so federal dollars should be the ones that are enforcing, I think most people would be in agreement with that. I think the problem that a lot of people have is that's not what the City Council is trying to sell. They're trying to sell that what they're doing today is going to prevent federal law enforcement agents from going forward deportations, and that's not what they're going to be doing. That's not what they're doing. They're trying to act like this is a much bigger thing than it is.
They can't, they cannot stop them. It's, it'll be a fraction of justice. It's illegal for them to stop it. If the federal government decides to go and detain an illegal immigrant, it's nothing the city can do about it, just to watch and let it happen.
You're totally right, but I really appreciate your perspective, Ed. Call us again, we'd love to hear from you. 800-222-KABC is the phone number. Look, it's just the way the LA City Council is selling this. And number one, that we haven't already been doing this for 45 years, and two, that this is really so we can get more migrants to report crime, which I guess they're not, but then again, we've had Special Order 40 for 45 years. So what are we doing here? It's a lot of grandstanding, it's a lot of performative nonsense, and yes, as Ed just said, there's nothing the city of Los Angeles, the state of California can do legally to stop federal law enforcement agencies from enforcing the law. Now, you can definitely agree or disagree with who they're going to be enforcing that law on first, but that is a different story for a different day. Let's go to Brian in Lake Forest. Brian, hello.
Hey, Randy, thanks for taking my call. Just to echo kind of some of the previous callers' statements regarding illegal immigration, again, that's actually what this specific issue is about. It's not for legal immigrants, and I'm actually married to a legal immigrant as well, but it's more about illegal immigration and specifically how you do not know the backgrounds of any illegal immigrant, for one, because they came across the border illegally. Secondly, if you don't come through a actual official port of entry, you are also crossing over illegally and violate a federal law. So ultimately, I think by claiming you're a sanctuary city, like New York City, we're going to end up being like that. And we saw how that ended up working out, and when your mayor is actually eviscerating the president for open border policy, I have a feeling we're going to experience the same thing unfortunately in the next few months.
Well, especially when LA wants to put themselves on the national stage on that position on the issue. I think you make a lot of sense, Brian. Thanks so much for the call, appreciate it. This is what they want. They want to have the showdown, they want to get painted on the national stage that they were the ones, they were fighting the resistance without taking a look inward and realizing that exactly what they're advocating for is not popular. And even in Los Angeles, it's becoming less popular every single day. And there is a conflation. When you hear the members of the City Council speak, they do not ever say legal or illegal, they just claim it's about all immigration, and there is a distinction. You can, again, make an advocacy for, well, we should figure out what to do with the people that have been here for a very long time, that are contributing to our economy and working in jobs, whether, you know, that we should do something about that, but we're not. We should, but why can't we at least come to agreement on the people that are committing crimes? That is the conundrum that is sanctuary city status is. Let's go to Enzo in Englewood. Enzo, hello.
Hey, Randy, righteous Randy, it's good to hear your voice. This is Enzo from Englewood. I want to let you know that I was in New York recently, and it's a sanctuary city, that idiot Eric Adams opened up, he's welcomed with $13 billion for illegal, and my ancestors came illegally. The bottom line is, they're getting benefits that we American veterans are denied. And speaking of which, I want to let you know, there's a big stand down tomorrow, around 8 o'clock tomorrow until around 4:00 in the afternoon at the West Los Angeles Federal VA Hospital on the other side of Wilshire Boulevard by the Brentwood School. American veterans can come there, get showers, haircuts, clothes, housing applications. It's once a year, it's tomorrow, I hope you can show up there. We love you. And the bottom line is, hopefully someday, the United States will treat its American veterans almost as good as it treats the illegal invaders and the homegrown career criminals. This has to stop, has to get, and hopefully, we pray to God that Trump lives and healthy and competent and brings the country back. and brings the country back. Otherwise, America will be finished, and I don't want that to happen.
Enzo, you make some really great points, and we should be putting the veterans above everybody else because y'all put your lives on the line for us. That event is from eight to four tomorrow at the West LA VA. If you have a veteran in your life that needs some help, needs some services, that's the place to do it. Enzo, thanks so much for the call. Appreciate it. Let's go to Stephen in Torrance. Stephen, hello.
Hello. I have an idea. As a matter of fact, I have some advice for President Trump. If I were him, I'd say, you know, guys, you're right. Municipal tax dollars should not necessarily be used to help federal projects. And because that's true, I will now shut down the borders as tight as a drum so we don't have to have you cities make this choice. And he should tighten the borders using whatever means necessary so that the cities don't have to make that choice.
That is a fascinating argument and take exactly what they say they're advocating for to the nth degree. That, that is one way to go about it, Stephen. Thanks so much for the call. Appreciate it. We'll take more of your phone calls and your emails. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC. By the way, the fixed California hour that we do for our sister station in San Francisco, KSFO, it airs 11 o'clock at night. We just moved that signal to AM 810, which is a clear channel signal that at night you can hear in Southern California. So get a preset going for AM 810 and listen to John and me at 11 o'clock tonight, you know, if you're awake then. If you'd like to email us, you could do so at randykabc@gmail.com. Glenn writes in and says, thank God, Los Angeles is officially a sanctuary city. You should all feel much safer now, except for the fact that the US government in its incoming form doesn't give one red blip about this city's policy if it's in violation of federal law, which it is. Rather than LAPD and LASD surrendering incarcerated individuals to ICE after they are known illegal aliens, now they will have to track them down after release. That opens the doors to ICE getting it wrong a certain percentage of the time, and a couple of things can happen. First, they're going to have to kick down doors to apprehend formerly apprehended illegals, putting that person's life in jeopardy as well as everyone else in that particular home. Second, they could possibly arrest, detain the wrong individual who may also be here illegally, but wasn't the target of the raid. Guess what happens to them? Bye-bye. Third, the ICE presence will be accompanied by the US military in some circumstances and can and will cause undue fear and stress to regular citizens going about their business. Fourth, the new government will openly help those who help themselves. Conversely, they will not care about not being nice to the leaders who implemented this sanctuary status and will use all necessary means to complete their stated mission. So there you go. That comes from Glenn, and that is a pretty sober take on what's going on. Hey, I got something nice for you. How great is this? 790 KABC welcomes Stevie Wonder to the Crypto Arena on December 14th. Oh, I've seen Stevie Wonder at a Christmas show. It is good times. I saw Stevie do Songs in the Key of Life, the whole album at the Forum. But this is Stevie at the crypto.com arena, December 14th. Tickets on sale Friday at noon at access.com. But right now, caller number nine at 1-888-795-2222 gets a pair of tickets to the show. Tickets furnished by Golden Voice. Good luck dialing. Get your tickets to Stevie Wonder. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC. If you'd like to email us, you could do so at randykabc@gmail.com. Christie writes in, LA is a sanctuary city. Could have fooled me. For whom? It's just more posturing, the same posturing lies and crummy leadership that has promoted homelessness, crime and poverty of our inner city. And then she calls them a name. I want to play you, I got a whole bunch of sound from the members of the city council posturing on this. And we'll play some more of it on the John Phillips Show tomorrow. I want to play you Amelda Padilla.
Street pavements that are cooler.
This Amelda Padilla.
Broken windy theory.
Because she didn't give the same cliched response as the rest of them.
You know, colleagues, I'm really glad we're doing this. I think this is a step in the right direction to protect our migrant, immigrant undocumented community. But I would also be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to say a few things that are on my mind. Since November 5th, 2024, I have been called very often by different stakeholders asking me what happened to the Latino community and why did they shift over to voting red? And the only answer that I can really think about is my own actions from 2020, when I vividly remember talking to leaders in the California Democratic Party, and I told them, you are at risk of losing the Latino voters if you do not start to utilize your own power to begin conversations to elevate to the national level the interests in the Democratic Party caring about true immigration reform.
So the fact that when Biden was in control, he didn't do anything about immigration reform, let alone the border, Amelda realized something was brewing. And the fact that whoever's been in charge has ignored this issue, depending on whether you're for the concept preemptive reform and the path to citizenship or shutting down the border, the fact that so many administrations just completely ignored the issue has pissed off a lot of locals.
And all of that fell on deaf ears. So instead, what you're starting to see is that people went with the party that at minimum is willing to start to talk about it. Maybe not in their best interest, but they were willing to at least talk about it. So today.
I'm going to make this prediction right now. We're going to find out Amelda Padilla.
The neighborhood kids, the down ass kids don't like it.
Is the smartest person on that council.
To all of the future federal leaders that are going to take over very soon, I tell them this, that with this action today, what the LA City Council is trying to say is that we're not going to allow for the actions that once upon a time took place in 1954, where with Operation, I don't choose to use the second word.
Good, because I can't air it. Yeah, if you find out what that operation was called, you might be horrified.
Or what happened in the 1970s when they did massive deportations and broke families. Los Angeles is not going to let that happen. But instead, what I hope this starts is a conversation to potentially get what we got back in 1986 under a Republican administration, where we actually had something related to true immigration reform with the Immigration Reform and Control Act under President Ronald Reagan.
Hey, she knows her history, but it is interesting saying we want to work with the feds, but also we're enacting a law that means we won't work with the feds. But hey, she's smarter than the rest of them. There's a whole lot of this sound left to play. I'll get it for you on the John Phillips Show tomorrow, and I'll see you tomorrow for another News Blitz at five, right here on Talk Radio 790 KABC.